Good morning and welcome to the Regular Board of County Commissioners Meeting. Today is Tuesday, May 27th. We do begin each of our meetings with an invocation. This morning, our invocation will be given by Pastor Raymond Pettit from outside the gates worship. We invite you to stand and join us.
Good morning ma'am, gentlemen. This morning, as we have closed in on another Memorial Day, I'd like to just, for a moment, give honor to those who have gone on before us. Lieutenant Benison, one of my people, in 2010, if we could, just one moment, please. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to give honor to those who had fallen before us. But most of all, Father, I pray that you would come into this place this morning and take our hearts, make us ready for whatever's coming on the agenda this morning. Prepare us for the things that are coming, such as the Western Heritage in the next couple of weeks, God. Thank you for the opportunity for the business of right here in El Paso County. We thank you for each of the individuals and the citizens that are here. Pray that you would just open our hearts and our spirits, make us ready for whatever it is you need us to do. May we be ready, Father, to accomplish the tasks that you have set before us. We ask it in your son's name. Amen.
And Commissioner Wyson, if you'd lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Item number three is staff emergency items, and I'm unaware of any staff emergency items this morning.
Item four.
Item number four is changes, postponements, and notice of the next meeting. I'm unaware of any changes to today's agenda, and the next meeting will be Tuesday, June 10th, at nine o'clock AM.
Okay, before we proceed with item five, we do have a Commissioner out today. Commissioner Bremer is out. If we could have a motion to excuse her, please.
Motion to excuse Commissioner Bremer from today's meeting.
Second.
Okay, that has been moved and seconded. I'll call the roll. Commissioner Wyson?
Aye.
Commissioner Applegate?
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, that passes for zero. Item five.
Item number five is the Consent Calendar, including items 5A through 5K1. And Madam Chair, I'm aware of several people in the audience that would like to speak on an item on the Consent Calendar, and one person that would like to be called in.
Okay, thank you so much. At this time, if you have comments on an item on the Consent Calendar, I would invite you to come forward. We do need you to sign in. If you have not already, you will have three minutes to speak. You can state your name clearly on the record before you begin, please.
Good morning, County Commissioners, County Chair, Commissioner Greitner, Vice Chair, Commissioner Holly Williams. My name is Lisa Bigelow, and I am here to talk about the appointment to the Pike's Peak Library District. I object to the process, the lack of transparency and accountability, and object to the proposed appointment of Kenny Kuniyuki. The process, which finally now conforms with the Open Meetings Law, yet to exclude the public, is truly, totally inefficient. So the way that this was handled, with the two entities doing separate interviews, and not all of the appoint seven finalists being interviewed by all of the liaisons, was very disturbing and concerning. Mr. Kuniyuki, his qualifications may seem to be appropriate, yet he lacks a lot of what I think the Pike's Peak Library District is already lacking, and it's not only its leadership, its lack of its qualified CEO, qualified CFO, and a board that is not accountable to anybody. They're not accountable to, obviously, you guys, because you're not following what's going on. They're not, the city council's been trying and trying, and we've been over there discussing our concerns with them, more so than with you, and that's, I think this is where we need to be, because they, the Board of Trustees are not accountable to us. We are the ones paying the taxes. We deserve to be heard. And their lack of respect, quite frankly, for other elected officials that I've seen, that I've witnessed in the meetings, is astounding. And I've been a public servant for my whole career, so I'm familiar with a lot of your faces up there at the podium, or up there, from my position. And I never thought I'd be here, speaking to you, as well as City Council, but I believe so strongly that we have a right to demand accountability, and you are the only people we can go to. We can't go to them. They're appointed by you and by City Council. Something's got to change. And we will be back again, because I'm not happy with this appointment. He lacks, he hasn't even been in our community for approximately a year. He's not the most qualified of the seven finalists to be appointed, and I'm very disappointed in the way the process was conducted. So be sure that we'll be back. I will be back as a concerned citizen, as a taxpayer. We deserve to have our Rock Remen Library Branch. There's no reason that branch was closed. It's not a financial thing. I was the head, I was the head of the city budget for many years. I know what the financials look like, and there are a lot of things that can be done to accomplish it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have our next guest.
I'm Carla Powers, and I believe we've talked before. First of all, I want to say that this lawsuit that Kenny Kuniyuki has been advised not to share his background with us, not to talk with us, even though we just reached out, as any citizens would be in this whole area, but they've, he mentioned the lawsuit, and the lawsuit is about breaking the Sunshine laws in the past. It doesn't have anything to do with appointing someone to the Board of Trustees now. And so, I don't know whoever advised him, but please, you guys, let's just try to have some open communication here and work forward together on things. So I'm urging you to consider the facts when voting to appoint Kenny Kuniyuki. The applications were received from other candidates that had higher qualifications for what is needed on the Pike's Peak Board of Trustees today. While Kenny has strong military leadership experience, no doubt about that, his application does not give a clear picture of any financial expertise with budgets such as Pike's Peak Library Districts, nor does it show that Kenny understands the underpinnings of our Pike's Peak Library District system. And if we had been able to be present during the interviews, maybe we'd have more information on that. If we'd had the ability to talk to him ahead of time, maybe we would have more information about that, but we don't. So we're just having to go from what we have on his application. Kenny also mentioned on his application that he has no board experience. Oh my gosh, you guys are going to throw him to the wolves, put him on this board, when he has no board experience? You've got to think about that. He's lived in Colorado Springs for less than a year, so he really doesn't understand our culture here, right now, you guys, the different people that we have in this area, how they come together or not, and he doesn't understand that. So I also question, about the one question he had about the library, he said he would like to see the library expand its Makerspace program, so that our community's youth have access to resources that inspire them to create a better future. Now, while that is wonderful, that is a wonderful thing, right now, I think that Pike's Peak Library District should be looking for someone that's looking, that would have equal access or fiscal responsibility to make a, for our present situation right now. I'm not sure that this is the time for Makerspace. I think we need to look at the fiscal responsibility and how we're using, prioritizing the money right now. So out of the 51 applicants, I clearly, and you guys clearly could see, that there were better people, that were better suited financially, with a financial background than this, and with a better library background than this. So I'd strongly urge you to think twice before voting for him. Thank you.
Hi, my name is, I guess I'll wait. My name is Catherine Chukas, and I'm a long-term resident of El Paso County, and I'm here speaking about the Consent Item 5A, about the PPLD Board appointment. Again, we as taxpayers, we as property owners, don't have the ability to have a say about who the leadership is of the Pike's Peak Library District. Members of this county commission, 30% of the mills that you are responsible for have to go to the library. 30% of the mills you're responsible for. 6.8% for the county, and 3%, or 6.8 mills for the county, what you assess, and three mills is what's assessed for the library. So you're the only ones in control, and 30% of the mills that you're responsible for need to make sure that board members to this district, which assesses taxes, the PPLD assesses three mills of taxes, they need to be qualified financially, and need to be qualified financially about Colorado's very unique public finance laws. Again, no other state in the Union has these types of public finance laws. There were 51 applicants that led down to seven finalists, and last Monday, in terms of the joint commission that came together to talk about this, or was going to talk about the seven finalists, I think maybe we verbally heard discussion about four of them, and the four of them weren't even interviewed by all four members of that group that were making the decision. You should probably make sure that you're interviewing all seven people, if that's what this group is coming together to do. I urge you not to vote for this individual, Mr. Kuniyuki. His example of Makerspaces, it's interesting. I've been using Makerspaces with my children for seven years. I know what it inspires to do. I would be happy to talk to you about Makerspaces, too. It's not unique. It is not a unique thing about a leader. What is needed for a unique thing about a leader, a leader who controls 30% of the mills that you are elected to be responsible for, needs to be financial responsibility about Colorado Public Finance laws, and that's what we need. Again, it almost seems to me that Mr. Kuniyuki didn't even understand the development of the strategic plan of the library, which has been going on for about four years, had a lot of insight and improvements about it. Makerspaces and creativity and engineering are all a part of that, yes. Also, libraries being open on Sundays is a part of that, yes. Also, libraries being used to make commerce, yes. All of these things are important and a part of the strategic plan of the library, and Mr. Kuniyuki did not even reflect that. Again, you had 51 qualified applicants. I'm not sure that this is the right one to vote yes for, given that it actually is, again, you're responsible for 30, that, that board is responsible for 30% of the mills that are being assessed, that you are elected to deal with. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on an item on the Consent Calendar? Okay, hearing none, we do have one online.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm here to urge you to vote no on the confirmation of Kenny Kuniyuki to the Pike's Peak Library District Board of Trustees. This appointment may seem like a small issue next to land use or zoning, but for many of us, it represents something much bigger. Over the past six months, community members have tried to engage the library board with fair, thoughtful questions, only to be met with silence or resistance. Public records requests have returned with inflated cost estimates, some in the millions, making it nearly impossible to get transparency. This isn't just about documents. It's about how major decisions are being made, like the move to close neighborhood libraries in favor of centralized hubs, or the push to buy facilities outright without showing the supporting data. We've asked, why ignore consultants' recommendations for deeper financial and user analysis? Why shut the public out? The appointment process itself has been deeply flawed. One liaison who's attended a very few board meetings and interviewed just three out of 51 applicants, put forward Mr. Kuniyuki. That's not diligence, that's rushing. Mr. Kuniyuki has lived in El Paso County for approximately a year. His main stated goal is to grow Makerspaces. While innovation is important, it cannot come at the cost of closing vital neighborhood libraries like Rock Remen, Ruth Holly, or Zion Mountain, spaces our communities rely on. He had agreed to meet with COS Reads, a local nonprofit working to protect our libraries, but canceled at someone's advice that it might show partiality. He's not even a trustee yet. If he's unwilling to meet with concerned citizens now, what should we expect once he's seated? Ultimately, confirming Mr. Kuniyuki would mean endorsing a flawed process that disregards public trust. We need a trustee who brings experience, local awareness, and a willingness to listen. This appointment is a chance to do better. Please, don't miss it. Thank you.
Okay, I think that was our last comment. Thank you. Okay, so with that, I will move it up here for a motion on the Consent Calendar.
I move to approve the Consent Calendar.
Second.
Okay, that has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Wyson?
Aye.
Commissioner Applegate?
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, the Consent Calendar passes for zero. Item six.
Item number six is the Proclamation Recognizing El Paso County's Proud Western Heritage. Holly Williams, Vice Chair, Board of County Commissioners.
Vice Chair Williams.
Good morning. I move the following proclamation. The Proclamation Recognizing El Paso County's Proud Western Heritage. Whereas El Paso County is proud of our Western history and culture, and recognizes how our past continues to shape the Pike's Peak region. And whereas events such as the Colorado Springs Western Street Breakfast, the Pike's Peak or Bust Rodeo, and the El Paso County Fair preserve and promote our wonderful heritage. And whereas on June 18th, the annual Colorado Springs Western Street Breakfast along Tahone Street at Pike's Peak Avenue will once again bring the community to Street at Pike's Peak Avenue will once again bring the community together for a fun-filled send-off for the Pike's Peak Range Riders, whose annual ride around Pike's Peak is a cherished community tradition that serves to promote the Pike's Peak or Bus Rodeo as a centerpiece of summer and an important economic driver for the entire region. And whereas the Pike's Peak or Bus Rodeo was started in 1937 by Spencer Penrose, an El Paso County pioneer, whose legacy includes the Broadmoor Hotel, the Cheyenne Mountain Zoo, the Broadmoor Pike's Peak International Hill Climb, and the ongoing philanthropic contributions of the El Palmar Foundation. And whereas the 84th Pike's Peak or Bus Rodeo is one of the nation's oldest and most prestigious rodeos with performances running from July 8th through July 12th. And whereas the El Paso County Fair is celebrating its 120th anniversary when it opens on July 12th and runs until July 19th at the county fairgrounds in Calhan. And whereas the values defined by the Pike's Peak Range Riders, the Cowboy Way, and the Old West are equally relevant today and shared through community gatherings, equestrian events, rodeos, and parades, events that are woven into the fabric of El Paso County and the Pike's Peak region. Now therefore, the Board of El Paso County Commissioners, in recognition of upcoming events celebrating our Western heritage, urges local businesses to join various county departments and elected offices in encouraging employees to take part in these special events and to wear Western wear attire on the days of these events. Done this 27th day of May 2025 at Colorado Springs, Colorado. The Board of County Commissioners of El Paso County, Colorado, Kerry Geitner Chair, Holly Williams Vice Chair, Corey Applegate Member, Kami Bremer Member, Bill Weisong Member, and attested to by Steve Schleicher, County Clerk and Recorder.
All right, if my fellow Commissioners, yeah.
Second.
Thank you so much. So we have a motion on a second on that proclamation. We have some guests here to share with us today, and I would invite you to come forward and speak for us.
Good morning. Thank you for that proclamation, and thank you for the opportunity to be here today. My name is Laurie Carroll. I'm the Vice President of the Board of the Directors of the Pike's Peak or Bus Rodeo. As you just stated, Spencer Penrose founded the rodeo in 1937. It's carried on every year since then, except for the World War II period years and COVID. In 1946, the governing board of the rodeo decided to dedicate all the proceeds of the rodeo to local military families, and we're proud to carry on that tradition today. This year's rodeo is, as you said, July 8th through 12th at the Norris Penrose Event Center. We expect to see over 200 contestants and 30,000 to 35,000 fans at our rodeo. We're very excited to continue on the tradition, and we thank all the local businesses and sponsors and county and community officials that support the rodeo every year and help us recognize our military, active-duty military and their families. Thank you. I know everybody really wants to hear Girl of the West, so I'm going to turn it over to Corliss Palmer.
Thank you so much for being here this morning.
Good morning, I'm Corliss Palmer, and thank you for having us here today. I'm a 24-year volunteer for the Pike's Peak or Bus Rodeo, and as such, I direct the Girls of the West in all those years. As such, I schedule and escort the Girl of the West for over 150 appearances between the middle of May and the middle of July. So we're very busy, but we love everything we do. The Girl of the West program started in 1922 with Dawn Norris as the first Girl of the West. That was 103 years ago, it's crazy. The Girl of the West is chosen from a competition among others, and it's during the rodeo week, and they are chosen on horsemanship, interviews, and an impromptu speech, which is given at the past Girl of the West luncheon among, in front of all those sponsors, Board of Directors, Rangerettes, and many others. It's, and the competition this year is on July 10th. And now I'll introduce the Girl of the West. The 2025 Girl of the West is Emma Concedine. She's the daughter of Craig and Mandy Concedine. She's been deeply involved in the rodeo community, starting as the Kit Carson Riding Club Queen in 2002 and 2022 and 2023. And last year she was the Elizabeth Stampede Queen. She's competed in Jim Kana events in a buckle series for the last six years, and she was on the Kit Carson Riding Club Drill Team for five years. She graduated from the Village High School and is now studying business marketing at the University of Wyoming. In her free time, she enjoys being outside with her brothers, horseback riding with friends, and rafting and skiing. This is Emma Concedine, enjoy her.
Hi, my name is Emma. I'm the Girl of the West, and I serve as the proud ambassador of the Pike's Peak or Bus Rodeo. I'm excited to let you know pro rodeo world champions and rising stars from the U.S. and Canadian circuits, and national champions from Mexico will be here to compete for over $1 million in payouts. It's all happening at the NFR Open at the Pike's Peak or Bus Rodeo, July 8th through the 12th in Colorado Springs. 250 contestants will be bringing their A-game to the scenic and historic Norris Penrose Event Center to compete in bareback riding, breakaway roping, steer wrestling, team roping, saddle bronc riding, tied-on roping, saddle bronc riding, barrel racing, and bull riding. Finals will be held on Saturday night, July 12th, when the national circuit champions will be crowned. There are two reasons why I am both proud and passionate about this rodeo. First, this legacy event reminds us to preserve and celebrate our Western heritage and values, all while hosting the best in the sport of professional rodeo. I'm proud to say I was raised with these values. This is my heritage. And second, I'm grateful we honor our local military at every performance. U.S. Army SMDC and MDA on Tuesday night, Fort Carson 4th Infantry Division on Wednesday evening, First Responders in 302nd Airlift Wing on Thursday evening, Guard Reserve Units and Educators at the Friday Matinee, Space Night on Friday evening, the United States Air Force Academy at the Saturday Matinee, and NORAD U.S. Northcom on Saturday evening. The Pike's Peak or Bus Rodeo has been proudly giving back to our local military since 1946, and I am passionate about that mission. There's nothing quite as exciting as seeing professional rodeo in person. When the caliber is so high and competition is so fierce, you've got to be here to experience it, and we have seven, count them, seven performances to do so. The NFR Open at the Pike's Peak or Bus Rodeo takes place July 8th through the 12th with evening performances Tuesday through Saturday and matinee performances on Friday and Saturday. Evening performances begin at 7:00 PM with grounds opening at 4:00 PM. Matinee performances start at noon with grounds opening at 10:00 AM. Want to skip the traffic? Of course you do. We have free garage parking and free shuttles to the rodeo and back to your car for every performance, so kick back and enjoy the ride. You'll want to arrive early, grab a bite to eat, and check out the apparel and other Western fare our vendors have for sale. Find more fun in the PPOBR fan zone with kid-friendly activities, rides, mutton busting prelims, and more. We also have plenty of vendors, our feedlot tent, and the beer and wine crawl for adults. Stick around after the rodeo for autographs from the contestants, Rangerettes, visiting royalty, and me, your very own Girl of the West. Then, live music and dancing away in the Coors Roadhouse Saloon. When you see our awesome pink ram truck from Perkins Motors all over town, please know I'll be waving. Hope you'll be waving back. We will be heading out to represent our rodeo at businesses, military installations, and community events, and stopping by to see some of our generous sponsors who helped make this event possible. Speaking of community events, please plan to join us bright and early in downtown Colorado Springs on June 18th for the annual Colorado Springs Western Street Breakfast and the official send-off for the Pike's Peak Range Riders annual ride. Then, get ready for the best in professional rodeo at the NFR Open at the Pike's Peak or Bus Rodeo, July 8th through the 12th at the Norris Penrose Event Center. Tickets are selling fast, get yours online today at pikespeakorbus.org. I'll see you there, I can't wait.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here this morning, it's always such a pleasure. Do we have anyone else who wants to speak on this? Okay, so I will go ahead and bring it up here to Commissioners, so someone who'd like to kick us off.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you. I couldn't memorize all of that, my life depended on it. But Commissioner Applegate, myself, will be there on the morning of June 18th, so we look forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Applegate.
Yep, and I look forward to the events, June 18th. Yeah, I mean, Commissioner Weisong will be speaking, I'm looking forward to the rodeo, I'm looking forward to the fair, I mean, it's going to be great, so it'll be a fun summer.
And I will just say again, my thanks for you being here this morning. We are always so grateful to get to see you and hear about the rodeo. I know it's such an important event for our community and supporting our military, really appreciate everything that you do. I know there's a lot of volunteer hours that go into the rodeo, and we really appreciate everything that you do to both support our military and keep the Western heritage alive. Thank you. And I will let Commissioner Williams finish us off.
This is always such a wonderful day. I enjoy hearing from the Girl of the West, or Girls of the West, as we've had in some years. A few weeks ago, we were able to go to the Pro Rodeo Hall of Fame, where we were able to see the art competition for the youth, and just amazing. You know, I'm still stuck on stick figures, and these kids who draw this artwork, and it's going to be on display at many of the sponsors who are sponsoring the rodeo, is just completely amazing at the talent that we have in our community when it comes to artists. I will say, I appreciate the celebration of our Western heritage, the Cowboy Way, and I think of this mostly as a time where you didn't have to have signed agreements with people, you looked someone in the eye, and your word was your bond, and that's what we really enjoy the most. I know that the rodeo is going to be an absolute blast. I hear the Rangerettes are just amazing to see, and I look forward to seeing that again this year, and I always enjoy the shopping and the other events that we have, but I will not get on the mechanical bull under no circumstance. So, we appreciate your celebration of our Western heritage, and we look forward to attending some events over the next few weeks with you all present, so thank you very much.
Okay, I will go ahead and call the vote. Commissioner Weisong.
Aye.
Commissioner Applegate.
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, that passes 4-0. We'll take a brief recess for a photograph. I'll call this meeting back to order, and we are on item seven.
Item number seven is comments by elected officials and Commissioner Liaison reports.
Okay, I don't see any countywide elected officials in the audience, and I don't have any online, so we will bring it up here for Commissioner Weisong.
We had a number of people talk about the PPLD process. I received many emails concerning that process. I agree, this particular nomination process, it wasn't the time to change what the process was, but I do, do agree that more involvement is needed. I live in the northwest part of town where the Rock Remen Library was closed, very frustrated due to that process. So I am one of those that is in agreement that we've got to work, both as the Board of Commissioners, with City Council, to figure out how we can make this more transparent. And with that, I'd also just like to echo the, the comments Pastor made about Memorial Day. Memorial Day is that solemn occasion due to the many service members that perished serving our country. And I hope everyone did take the time out yesterday to reflect on that. I was gone last week, I was at the Western Interstate Conference in Rapid City. It was a much smaller conference than some of the other conferences, but it was very, very enlightening. It was, some of the, the key topics were energy, usage, and production in the West, the housing challenges, utilizing public lands. This is something new that's coming, so there's a lot more that has to be identified there. A lot of discussion on clean energy, and the Intergovernmental Forum on Public Lands, which they talked a lot about wildfire prevention mitigation. And again, just to reiterate that I'm very pleased with the Pike's Peak Regional Office of Emergency Management for implementing an evacuation modeling tool, and that's, we're well on our way to making sure that we can keep our community safe. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Applegate.
Thank you. So Wednesday, I was able to attend the Disabled American Veterans Convention, and that was over at the Embassy Suites, North Colorado Springs. I walked around for a little bit, I ran into a couple people I knew, and it was a good little event and good little resources for people that are, you know, they got out of the military, they're disabled, they can't necessarily work like a blue-collar job, and so they have resources available for them. El Palmar Foundation was there, as well as like the VA and a couple other of the nonprofits here in town. Thursday, me and Commissioner Geitner attended the Public Works, the DPW Yard, their luncheon, and we were just, we were just so ecstatic of the job they've been doing, just, you know, to echo, management's been doing well, their foreman and their supervisor have been doing a good job, and guys and gals for that department are just, they're working hard and they're doing great. Friday, I found myself at UCCS, I was taking a tour of the machine shop, and I was checking out all of the different hands-on things, programs that they have, and they actually put a lot of the mechanical and the electrical engineers through the different machine programs and tell them, play with the tools, you know, get a little hands-on experience, learn how to run these different types of machines. It's kind of neat and very cool, so. And Monday, I was over at the Pike's Peak National Cemetery, and it was so great to see the community come out for that event. I got to read the proclamation that we wrote, or last Tuesday, and read the record, and there was a lot of folks that were coming up, and they were definitely thanking the fellow veterans around them, and they were definitely taking a moment to understand that, you know, there was, you know, the people that are there at that Pike's Peak National Cemetery, every one of them was a hero, and every one of them did what they did so we could live free, so, thank you.
Vice Chair Williams.
Yes, I have a few things to comment on. Last week, I was able to meet with the Pike's Peak Elder Abuse Coalition to discuss the different types of interventions that we need to be aware of in the on the road as opposed to actually visiting family, but it was very enjoyable. We had every, all of our family there and visited, we visited all four of my kids this weekend, and a girlfriend, and my daughter-in-law, so it's been a wonderful weekend for family. Also was able to visit the grave of my father, who served in the Korean War, and visit the graves of my grandmother and grandfather. So, that was very enjoyable. This week, I wanted to say, in looking at my calendar, it's someone's birthday, so happy birthday, Commissioner Wyson, on tomorrow. We have our opioid abatement council meeting tomorrow on Wednesday afternoon, and then this weekend, my husband, when he was in college, applied for and received the Harry S. Truman Scholarship, which pays for the final year of college and the first two years of postgraduate degrees. And for many, many years, probably about 35, he has served in public office as well as serving the Harry S. Truman Foundation each year by conducting interviews for scholarship applicants, and so I'm really proud of him as he is receiving, one of two people receiving a special award this weekend in Kansas City, Missouri, based upon his continuous service to the foundation for these many years, and so we'll be traveling to Kansas City to enjoy that award this weekend, and I just wanted to congratulate Wayne Williams on the, on receiving that award. Thank you.
Okay, I will just add a few things. I will be participating in a Board of Health meeting, as well as the Region 16 meeting mentioned by Commissioner Williams, as well as our Regional Building meeting this week. I also wanted to point out that we have the CCI Summer Conference coming up next week, which is an opportunity for some continuing education for commissioners to learn about topics that are upcoming, often that are related to the most recent legislative session, and to really talk about how we can work and advocate for our community through CCI, which we mention here quite frequently, especially during the legislative session. I want to also make a brief comment. First, I'd like to thank my fellow commissioners for moving forward that library board appointment, but I do think correcting the record is very important, and there were, there have been several things that have continued to be said throughout this process that are just fundamentally wrong. They've been shared, emailed out by certain organizations. They're just not, just not accurate information, and so one of those things that I heard multiple times today is that we're seven finalists. There were not seven finalists, there were zero finalists. There were 51 applications, I believe, and each member of the joint committee, per state statute, has the ability to decide what they think is best for that board. We don't always often come at things with the exact same reasoning or priorities. Nevertheless, it is the job of that body to put forward a individual for approval, and so I think that is important. The process was very similar to how all volunteer positions are filled at the county, and in terms of, we don't host public interviews, interviews or meetings or phone conversations are all things that any elected can participate in, but there is not a formal requirement. And so this is all done in compliance with both open meetings laws as well as state statute. So, the process is driven by that state statute, and I believe that it was absolutely as transparent as any of the processes that we conduct here at the county. I have absolutely no concerns about that. In terms of people saying that they want more input, we have a representative form of government, and in this case, state law says that representatives make these appointments, just like we do to many other boards, and so yes, it is incumbent upon the individuals who are tasked with that to evaluate those candidates, as I said, sometimes through conversations, other, other means, but ultimately, they are political appointments. They are not job hirings. We can all disagree on qualifications, what's important, but at the end of the day, that, that's how those appointments are made consistently. There was nothing different, in my opinion, about the way that this was done in any way, shape, or form. I also saw, there was an email that was sent out that indicated that perhaps a vote was not correctly taken. That is also false information. There was a public meeting, the minutes were taken, we had two attorneys present, and so I'm just very concerned about the continued misinformation that is being presented by some of the folks who are, again, quite frankly, they have their own agenda, they have a special interest group, and, and that's fine, but I do think that making sure that we have correct information is incredibly important. So with that, I just want to, I'll close out my comments by saying, thank you again to Commissioner Wyson for sharing the information on the building. I saw a presentation by Secretary Scott Turner, who was talking about exactly some of those things around housing and programming. I expect we're going to see some pretty exciting things come out of that, and one of the things that he said and talked about is, the American dream is homeownership. That is something that has been consistent, and so I really look forward to seeing the Trump administration try to work towards making that a reality and providing that opportunity for as many Americans as possible. I thought that he summed it up well with his comments at this particular time that I was viewing, which were, build, baby, build. They're focused on making sure that there is housing supply available for as many people who want to participate in that American dream. So, with that, I will close my comments, and we can move to item eight.
Item number eight is community service organization reports, and there are none.
Item nine.
Item number nine is public comment on items not scheduled on the agenda, and Madam Chair, I'm unaware of anyone signing in ahead of time to speak today.
Okay, is there anyone here who would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, see, no one coming forward, and we have no one online. Item 10.
Item number 10 is the called-up consent calendar, and there are no items called up.
Item 11.
Item 11 is Department and Committee Reports, Non-Action Items. 11A Quarterly Sales and Use Tax Report, 2025, Quarter 1, January, February, and March. Nikki Simmons, Chief Financial Officer.
Ms. Simmons.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nikki Simmons, Chief Financial Officer, here in front of you this morning to present the March 2025 Sales and Use Tax Collections. As I say every time I get here and do this, these are the most recent numbers that we have. This is March consumer activity, so the sales tax is paid by consumers in March of 2025, remitted to the Department of Revenue during April, and so we received this information in May. So, the overall retail collections, which are transmitted through the Department of Revenue, were up 5.13% for the month, March of '24 to March of '25, but year-to-date, bringing it to 0.71%. So, we're just shy of being up 1% for the year. As a reminder, we had budgeted to be up 3.5%, so this is lagging behind our initial budgetary projections. Use tax on automobiles collected through the Clerk and Recorders Office, down about 8% for the month of April, year-to-date, 4.26%. This is not directly an indicator of anything to do with the automobile sales, because there can be more sales at local car dealerships where that sales tax would be paid at the car dealership versus the use tax being paid when it's registered, so you have to take both of those into consideration. Those altogether are pretty flat for the year. Use tax collected by Regional Building in Alpesta County for construction materials, up 11.57% for the month of April, up 20% year-to-date. So, that is an indicator of where we're at with our permitting and things like that, very similar trends to what Regional Building is seeing. So, overall, when you put everything together, up 5.21% for the month of April, and just shy of that 1% year-to-date. And so, the other chart I'll show you is the budget to actual, so you can see, we're shy of budget for the first three months by about $915,000. Similar information to what I shared last month when I talked about the March financial budget analysis, that this is offset, we have other compensating revenues, there's no concern at this point of those revenues being low, and we continue to monitor those to plan for the 2026 budget. And if anybody has additional interest in details, out on the website are several reports that we publish every month, including how this applies to the public safety tax, but also what we call Attachment A, which is the monthly attachment to the sales and use presentations, which allows you to go through and see by industry how the sales and use tax collections are going, and so you can see retail is up about 2% for the year, and you can go through industry by industry and see how that's doing countywide. Are there any questions for me about sales and use tax collection?
Okay, looks like no questions. Commissioner Williams.
I have a comment, and it's not related to your report at all, so, lest I fail at math in public, I had to take a moment to figure it out. One of our public speakers claimed that a 3.1 mil levy was 30% of my property tax bill. So, I went through my property tax bill. I paid the library less than 5% in my property taxes, so I just wanted to, there's, mil levies are very, very hard to understand in property tax, and so I just wanted to say a 3.1 mil levy is not a 30% of your tax bill. It is, in my particular situation, I live in Academy School District 20, your school district bills are the highest usually for your property taxes. My library district tax is $91.52 a year, which is 4.9% of my overall tax bill, so I just wanted to clarify that. It's a little bit hard to understand. I have to have the assessor explain it to me every time, but I wanted to clarify that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any additional comments or questions for Ms. Simmons? Okay, thank you. Item 12.
Item number 12 is the addendum, and there are no addendums today.
Item 13.
Item 13 is the executive session, and there is no request for executive session.
Okay, with that, we've come to the end of this regular agenda. This meeting is adjourned. I'll call to order the Public Improvement District Number One meeting. Today is Tuesday, May 27th. Item one.
I would move to excuse Commissioner Bremer.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Williams, for that.
Second.
Okay, moved in seconded, I'll call the roll.
Aye.
Commissioner Applegate.
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye that passes 4-0, and now we are on item one.
Item number one is the consent calendar, including items 1A and 1B.
I would move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
I'll just call and make sure we don't have anyone here who'd like to speak on an item on the consent calendar. Seeing none in the room and none online, I will call the roll. Commissioner Wyson.
Aye.
Commissioner Applegate.
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye that passes 4-0. Item two.
Item two is the called-up consent calendar, and there are no items called up.
Okay, with that, we've come to the end of this agenda. This meeting is adjourned. Easy peasy.[1626.38]